May we have the... Oh, am I muted, Chris?
You're on, you're on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
We can hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Is it just me, or is everyone getting that feedback?
Yeah.
Okay. I think you're gonna need to move trustee Heinz, because you're in and out.
It looks like we've lost her.
She comes in better when she calls in.
Is there any way that trustee Benz can start the meeting, and then when trustee Heinz gets situated, she could join us?
Trustee Benz, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, why don't we have you begin the meeting?
Okay, now I gotta pay attention. Okay, so I start at 1.01, Board Meet, Meeting in Fort Maitmaitmation. This is a regular Board Meet, Meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District, Tuesday, July 14, 2020. Good?
Good.
Okay, 1.0002, Call to Ord Order. 1.003, Roll Roll Call.
Trustee La French.
I think she's muted. I think she just texted me and said she was muted.
I'll move on, Chris, if you can unmute her. Trustee Eckes?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Heinz, and then trustee La French.
Trustee La French, present.
And did I say trustee Benz?
Benz here.
Everyone is... All is present, and the time is 5:11 PM.
Okay, so our court room is established. 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance, please. So can we all stand and do our pledge? And ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all. Okay, thank you for that. So now we're at the adoption of the agenda, 2.01, Proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Trustee Benz, we do not have any.
Awesome. Okay, 2.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'm second by motion.
Trustee Turner, I second.
Okay. Eckes, motion. Turner, second. Okay. Can we get a vote?
Trustee La French?
La French, yes.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Aye.
Trustee Heinz?
Trustee Heinz, aye. Hello?
Okay. If Heinz is going to be on the phone and on the computer, she has to mute the computer, or it's gonna be a feedback on her end. Okay.
Can you hear me? My computer went out.
Okay, I'm just gonna go on. Are you there, there, Heinz?
Trustee Heinz?
Yeah.
Can I have you message the number that you're calling in from? In that way, I can unmute your cellphone that you're calling from, and then I will mute your, the computer that you're joining from.
Okay, so I'll go on. Okay, so 3.01, Public Comment Period for I-items listed on this Agenda and non-Agenda I-items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Governing Board. Dude, I don't have the thing to read.
Chris, we can't see it.
You can have the superintendent read it.
Can you please, because I suck at out loud read? Reading when? When I'm on the spot.
Pardon me. Public comment period for items listed on the Agenda and non-Agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Governing Board. The public comment period is administered by state law and is a point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers: Any person who wishes to address the Governing Board on open session Agenda and non-Agenda items only must complete a golden rise speaker's form and submit it to the assistant to the superintendent before the meeting is called to order. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session Agenda and non-Agenda items. The board limits total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and may ask that an additional person speak only if they have something new to add.
Thank you so much for that.
No problem.
Okay, so I'm sure we have odd audience members, so 3.02.
Christopher?
Okay, for open session, we have 10 participants for speaking. The first one is Marie Calvaro. I'm going to unmute Ms. Calvaro now. Ms. Calvaro, if you can unmute your mic, and we're ready when you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Mitchell, and Cabinet. My name is Marie Calvaro Roth, and I teach a Montsevere class at Eagle Ranch School. When San Bernardino County announced it was safe to move into Phase Two, I was okay with the idea of returning to school on a hybrid model. It sure would be a lot safer than a full return, and I knew that an all-virtual plan would be a challenge for my students and for me. Since then, we have all experienced and learned more about COVID-19 and continue to learn more every day. But I am now more realistic about the spread and possibility of contracting the virus while I am at school, and I am not in favor of a hybrid model return at this time. I know that I cannot guarantee protecting myself or my students, regardless of the precautions I take or what the district physically implements and procedurally sets up to keep us safe. I participated in our district's reopening logistics committee meeting yesterday, and I was pleased to hear that Dr. Mitchell's recommendation to the board at next week's meeting is leaning toward a reopening with full-distance learning. That, of course, would need to be approved by you, the board. As you discuss and contemplate your decision, I would urge you to keep the following in mind. Right now, you have a choice. No one is dictating that we have to be in the classroom when school begins. Sure, there might be pressure that we return to the classroom. But again, you have a choice. How high do the numbers have to get before a sensible choice is made? You may not get the opportunity to choose the next time, but you can make the wisest choice right now. If we return to our classrooms when we open, how will you feel and what will you say when employees and their family members and students and their family members test positive or die, and it is traced back to school? Will you feel okay and simply say that you did the best you could? That it was important to get the students back into their classrooms? Will you feel remorse and say, "Gosh, we shouldn't have gone back to our classrooms so soon"? It may be too late then. Right now, you have a choice to help stop the spread of the virus and to keep all of us as safe as you possibly can. This will not last forever, and when it is safe to return to our classrooms, you can feel good, knowing that your choice played a part to help protect our Adelanto School District community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nanette Cadilly. Nanette, you are unmuted. If you can unmute yourself, and we are ready when you are.
Okay. Good evening, trustees and cabinet. I'm Nanette Cadilly, and I will be speaking on behalf of one of our valuable ADTA members. As both a teacher at Mesa Linda Middle School and a parent to a child at Morgan Kincaid, I advocate in both stakeholder respects that we should begin our school year as fully online, similar to how San Bernardino City District is doing. As COVID cases are on the rise in California, I do not believe that our second option of seeing 25% of our students every day for four days minimizes our risk as educators and workers at the school sites in the slightest. We are still seeing all of our students every week, so where is the reduced risk? I understand the intent to minimize the risk to the students, and I applaud that. But what about the educators? There have been stories of teachers teaching summer school, contracting COVID, and dying. That's just summer school, which utilized far less teachers and serviced far less students than the regular school year does. The risk to teachers and site workers' health and safety is a great one that I feel we cannot take lightly. We don't have enough substitutes to cover the amount of teachers who would need to quarantine for two weeks if we were to have one instance of COVID on our campus, which has about between 900 and 1,000 students. As a nation, the statistics of students who will catch and die from COVID are 0.02%. That number may seem small, but that's 15,000 students throughout the United States. 15,000 lives will be lost because it was more important to open the doors to the schools than to wait until it was safe. Those numbers are absolutely unacceptable. One is too many, but I can't even fathom the pain that 15,000 families would go through if we opened our doors too early. I implore the district and stakeholders to consider the liability that we will be taking on if we go back, even part-time, to classroom instruction. Please think of the lives that will be impacted if even one case is found. Think of the number of teachers who are high-risk and run the risk of literal death and weeks to months of hospitalization at best. Let's make the healthy choice for everyone involved and start our school year as distance learning until we are 100% certain that it's safe to return. I appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Priscilla. You are unmuted when you're ready.
Thank you. Dear Cabinet and trustees, and welcome, Dr. Mitchell. I'm addressing you today regarding fiscal responsibility. At our last budget presentation, we were told that cutbacks in funding were coming. We are a small and humble district. We have never needed a public information officer before. Why now, in the light of cuts and funding, are we adding a new management position? You are asking teachers to learn new ways of teaching, prepare online work for students, which will take extra planning time. But we don't get to hire people to cover part of our expected duties. What is the justification for this expense?
Okay, our next speaker is Kimberly Smith. Kimberly, you are unmuted, and we're ready when you are.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Superintendent Mitchell, and Cabinet. My name is Kimberly Smith, and I'm a 5th grade teacher at Victoria McGathen Elementary School. Before I get into the main focus of my comments, I noticed that on the Agenda Item 5.07, regarding IXL funding, Victoria McGathen Elementary School is not mentioned. Having been one of the lead contacts at my site for several years, I know that we were one of the first schools to pay for and utilize the program. Therefore, I'm hoping this was just oversight and can be corrected before the new school year begins, as the majority of our teachers rely on this program as an invaluable instructional resource. So, let's get back to my main focus. As I'm entering into my 24th year of teaching, I have a few questions for everyone to consider as decisions being made. I also believe it is relevant that it is known that I am a mother of two Victoria McGathen Dual Immersion graduates who currently attend Silverado High School, the wife of Michael Smith, who is entering his 21st year of teaching as a 7th grade physical education teacher at Mesa Linda Middle School, the daughter of two parents who suffer from heart disease and diabetes, an active and concerned member of Adelanto District Teachers Association, and an avid runner and health advocate who believes that running, or some form of physical activity, and eating right are the foundations for a sustainably healthy life. The following questions might help in the approval of Agenda Items 5.23 and 5.24 that seem to be required for distance learning. If a teacher tests positive for COVID-19, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered? Is it paid? If that teacher has five classes a day with 30 students each, do all 150 of those students need to then stay home and quarantine for 14 days? Do all of the staff and students that they come in contact with quarantine too? Do all 150 of those students now have to get tested? Who pays for those tests? Are they happening at school? How are the parents being notified? Does everyone in each of those kids' families need to get tested? Who pays for that? What if someone who lives in the same house as a teacher tests positive? Does that teacher now need to take 14 days off of work to quarantine? Is that time off covered? Is it paid? Where is the district going to find a substitute teacher who will work in a classroom full of exposed, possibly infected, students for substitute pay? Substitutes teach in multiple schools. What if they are diagnosed with COVID-19? Do all the kids in each school now quarantine and get tested? Who is going to pay for that? What if a student in your kid's class tests positive? What if your kid tests positive? Does every other student and teacher they have been around quarantine? Do we all get notified who is infected and when? Or because of HIPAA regulations, are parents and teachers just going to get mysterious, may-have-been-in-contact emails all year long? What is this stress going to do to our teachers? How does it affect their health and well-being? How does it affect their ability to teach? How does it affect the quality of education they are able to provide? What is this going to do to our kids? What are the long-term effects of consistently being terrified? How will it affect students and faculty when the first teacher in their school dies from this? The first parent of a student who brought it home? The first kid? How many more people are going to die that otherwise would not have if we had stayed home longer? These are questions that have been circulating on social media. A lot of them have no clear-cut answers. I'm a person who believes that if you point out the problems, then you should have a solution or two to help solve them. Well, I just happen to have a solution that would prevent the majority of those scenarios from even happening: distance learning. The plan where no one gets hurt and parents are given back the joy of raising their children and being responsible for their well-being. As a teacher, mother, wife, and daughter, I understand that these are challenging, frightening, uncertain times. While you are deliberating, please be conscientious that your decisions will be affecting the lives and livelihood of others. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jennifer Reddard. Jennifer, you're unmuted, and we're ready when you are.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, and cabinets. First, I would like to extend heartfelt welcome to our new superintendent. For getting the past and pressing on to the future, I am encouraged that we have you at our helm, guiding us toward a new year with new challenges for education. I'm eager to see what you have planned for us. This is indeed a very strange time to be embarking on a new journey with a new district, but I'm sure we are all equal to the task. I noticed a lot of budget approvals on the agenda for a good many programs, which really will not be feasible this year with any school arrangement, be it distance, hybrid, or back-to-business with the added caveats of social distancing and masks. Some of the items, it seems, simply do not apply to this school year. One in particular is actually a really good concept for our children, and us, and the community, for that matter, to learn, and it's the mindfulness training. The benefits of mindfulness are far-reaching and give our students much in the way of strategies for coping throughout life. Many of our nation's great people have availed themselves of mindfulness training at huge expense. That expense is completely unnecessary. Mindfulness represents a shift, change, and attention. Rather than pay an expert to come and train us in mindfulness, a simple TED Talk, or two or three, on the subject to elaborate on the importance and benefits of mindfulness would really suffice. I, myself, am able to teach my kids mindfulness when we practice spatial awareness, during several attention breaks during the day, when we practice spatial awareness, attention detail, listening skills, and relaxation techniques. All that is needed is a TED Talk and some exposure to the online program GoMoodle, specifically the channel entitled Flow. Also, I'm able to teach students this from a distance as well as in class. At this time, as a stakeholder, I think it behoves us to save money in any small way we possibly can, and the nickels and dimes and dimes really add up to big-dollar amounts. This is a family needs to evaluate the little expenditures that don't seem like much, but that add up to a big chunk of the budget, so we should look for wherever we can script. Increased personnel, proper sanitation and disinfecting of our schools, and personal protective equipment need to be our big priorities at this time. Not overpay experts on something we can learn and adapt to very easily. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lauren Bimker. You are muted, and we're ready when you are.
Is that all right? Thank you. Good evening, trustees, cabinet, and welcome, Dr. Mitchell. Let's start off with some positives. I have to praise the after-school program IC. They're cooperative and an asset to our schools. I want to especially highlight the most amazing lead I've ever had the pleasure of working with, whether it be another company, or the district, or even myself running the program. Ms. Raquel at Best Franklin is a rock star. She is amazing. Go, Raquel. On another Agenda item, for those of you that might not be aware, the teachers have had a professional development day scheduled for April 13. This date is on the teacher's work calendar and was approved by the teachers, the district, and the school board. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, the district canceled this opportunity for teachers. ADTA was happy to have it still held on that day or schedule it for another day so that our teachers may receive important professional development. It was even more essential at that time for us to get the most updated training, especially with the new distance learning model. The district proceeded to offer its trainings on a voluntary basis. ADTA is still hoping that the district will schedule this day and allow teachers to get the training they need. Teachers also hope that the district can reschedule the professional development opportunity, as it is a paid opportunity for teachers, many of whom count on that day when planning for their years. We know that we are trying to save money. However, this money was already allocated and approved for the 1920 full-year budget that is closed. That money should have already been spent. Please direct the cabinet to proceed with rescheduling this professional development opportunity for all the many upcoming trainings needed for this new way of teaching. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Stacy Krupp. Stacy, if you can unmute your mic, and we are ready when you are.
Hello, everyone. Hi. I am a mother. I'm a parent educator. And I have been going through a lot of stress trying to multitask with both my job, which I care a lot about, as well as making sure my children are getting everything that they need. I don't have much funding, and I know you guys provided a Chromebook for one per family. Well, for what distant learning is requiring, that's not gonna be enough for my three children to be fully, how do you say, engaged in the distance learning like they should, because it's gonna require them to be on at the same time, possible Zoom meetings, because we have. I do wanna commend a lot of the teachers at Melva Davis and Morgan Kincaid. Those are where my kids are currently at. And they are very in tune with the learning at the end of the year, as well as, like, the last lady recommended or commended on the after-school program. My kids are doing the summer school currently. They're very in tune, but it is like a lot that we require from the kids, which is okay, that's what we want. But I unfortunately don't have the funding to have a computer or a tablet for each of my kids to be able to attend the classes on time and complete all of their work on time. That's one of my struggles I'm having. Another thing that I was a little worried about is that I have a student who is in an SDC class, which he needs, you know, a little bit more help, and he also needs more breaks. So it's a lot of stress on him to have to complete all of this stuff in the amount of time. And I don't want it to affect their grades or anything when they can accommodate those things. And, of course, the most important is that staying in the house as much as we are is affecting not only my children, but me as well. Our mental capacity to be able to go out and do PE activities and things have been also shut down recently. The parks were open, but then they were closed. So all of this is affecting our children and what their life expands are, pretty much, is how I'm looking at it. I'm not for going back half of the school year, or however the hybrid is recommending. I would prefer to do distance learning, but ask for more assistance with supplies and things. And that's it. And I also miss my students at school. I really love what I do, and that's affecting me as well, that I don't get to work with my students. And I also was told if we were to go back, that we have to do our six feet away from our special-needs students, which I don't think is gonna work. Another reason I don't wanna go back until it's fully open. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, and I'm gonna butcher this, I'm sorry, Evelyn Scarrero. If you could unmute yourself, we're ready when you are.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Scarrero. I have two kids in Melvane and one in Morgan Kincaid. I would like to express my concern about our kids going back to school and having to wear masks and social distancing and temperature check. I do not agree with them wearing masks. Health experts around the world say they have little to no effect on protecting against the spread of the disease. In fact, there's scientific proof that wearing face masks poses health risks and actually do more harm than good. For kids and people below age 25, the fatality rate of COVID-19 is 0.00008%. That's broadly one in 1.25 million. So why should kids be required to wear masks? All this just doesn't make sense to me. In fact, if masks work, then why are we social distancing? If social distancing work, then why should we wear masks? We should not teach our kids to live on fear. Let whoever is afraid to do online classes and let the rest of the kids go back to normal. Has it affected them to stay home for us parents that need to go back to work? I have five kids. If I had to go back to work, I don't know what am I gonna do? I can't afford childcare. I have no family in the high desert, and our kids need to have their education, sports, and their normal life. That's what I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Crystal Wiley. Crystal, we're ready when you are. If you can unmute your mic.
Good evening, Madam President, other trustees, Dr. Mitchell, and the other cabinet members. I have been in contact with Dr. Mitchell last week in a 30-minute Zoom meeting. I was in contact with Ms. Kredil on Monday concerning what I'm going to speak about here in a second, and I was on the logistics meeting that we had yesterday. After speaking with Dr. Mitchell last Thursday on Zoom, we discussed many things that I currently am putting into place to use when students return to my classroom when it's safe for all stakeholders. I feel that teachers should not be forced to return to the classroom, that all district personnel should be tested before returning to any teaching model. The information that I'm about to give you relates to the testing going on currently at Fort Irwin today and tomorrow. These tests were ordered due to the death of a coworker that car pulled and contracted COVID, along with the other four occupants of the car. All car occupants contracted COVID, but their illnesses varied all the second week of April. The first gentleman died on the 1st of July. There is still one gentleman on a ventilator in intensive care. The third gentleman was just taken off the ventilator and re-woken up. The fourth gentleman's case never got to a ventilator because his illness was not as severe as his other coworkers. All of these people worked for the same subcontractor out at Fort Irwin. My husband is on vacation this week, but due to the fact that he has been an employee out at Fort Irwin in the computer maintenance, computer operations maintenance department, he's been working all through COVID. In his little office that he works in, which is a 12-by-12 room, there are six employees that work there. All six had to go on a variated shift so that no one was in the room at the same time for COVID. They report to work 30 minutes ahead of time. The previous worker cleans their station, and then he fills out the logs for what is going to happen with the next eight or 10-hour, or eight, 10, or 12-hour shift that he must have. The company that went is that is currently at Fort Irwin today and tomorrow is called PrimeX. I'm going to spell it. Capital P-R-I-M-E-X. They are located at 16742 Stag Street in Van Nuys, California. Their zip is 91402. Their phone number is 1-800-961-7870. David V. Kahn is the medical, or MD, is the medical director of this company that is performing these tests. When my husband went and had the test performed, he did not go into great detail about how the test felt, but he said it was not as big of a deal as what some have made it out to be. I have lived in fear since he had to work during all of COVID, and we did not. Before school ended last year, we had a couple that works at our site who had been around a sister who was too tested positive the day after she reported to school. She was at school on a Friday, her sister tested positive for COVID. She was an employee at the prisons in Southern California. Her husband also works at our school and was on-site. Even after the positive test of these two individuals, they returned to campus on Monday around other individuals while we were giving a stop-by-and-say-goodbye farewell to an employee of our school district that worked for our district for 34 years and was a teacher for 25, and that was Mrs. Hickman. Myself, Mrs. Bailey, and the two custodians were here on Friday and were in direct contact with this individual. Our lives for the next week and a half were turned upside down because we did not know if we were allowed to return or we were not, but because we were the third party to the person who was with the person with COVID, we were on a 45-minute call from San Bernardino County and given direct instructions of what to do based on what happened if the individual that we were in contact with tested positive. Since then, I received a phone call yesterday. One of my dear friends here at Eagle Ranch, a teacher, was back east. She drove back east and said her flu, and was with her family and her son and her daughter-in-law. Halfway back to California, her daughter-in-law called her, and she was admitted immediately to the hospital in Arkansas because she has COVID. So we have a teacher now that works at our site that within the next 14 days, when she's supposed to be quarantined with the final week, if she tests positive, she would not be able to come on-site, no matter what the learning capabilities would be. Hybrid at home or hybrid and distance learning at school. There is much concern about what happened at Eagle Ranch and the fact that it could it happen again. These individuals that were next to someone are still in contact with their relatives, and there is fear for returning to campus from many of our teachers. After reading an article today that said that more than 50% of our teachers out there in America today are over the age of 50, which means they are at high risk to contract COVID, we have a very high-risk staff here. Without naming names because of confidentiality, I have two teachers here that have pacemakers and that are on and that have other things, and those are severe cases that we have to be very careful with. It doesn't matter if kids come to school or not. Teachers are still going to be coming to school, and are we safe? We are not going to know if we're safe unless we test. The other thing I have to bring up is I am for letting teachers come on campus if they need to. I live in Phelan, California, and unfortunately, during COVID, for the first three weeks, I was unable to do distance learning because my rate of internet speed was 1.7 and still is 1.7. As we speak, Frontier Communications and Arizona Pipeline are installing pipeline microfibers and everything in neighborhoods that have more than 20 families in a mile radius. Those of us that live on five or more acres, and we only have five homes on a mile radius, they are installing these computer internet tanks on our telephone wires so that we, that are at nine speed, because the state in March, or the federal government in March passed a bill that every household in America had to have the speed of 7.5 in order to be able to receive their education online. Unfortunately, the switch will not turn at my home until October 1st to let me have that capability. So the only way I can do my job, or do Zoom, or do anything else that has to do with the internet is at school. Fortunately, my principal let me on the day after Easter, and I could go on and explain everything that I did to reach my students. I was one of the first teachers to do drive-by pickups with their materials. I got my kids on Class Dojo. I was not able to communicate with my parents at home because the email would not send, and in the morning, I had 20 emails saying that it was not able to send, and I would have to resend the message. That meant I had to retype and redo. It was very frustrating for me as a teacher and as a parent who had two students that were eighth graders that are going to be freshmen. We could not go to Quail, we could not go to Quail School or Quail Middle School, and we could not go to Serrano to do distance learning at their hotspots. There were no restrooms. There was, you were not allowed out of your car, and I could not teach online speaking while my children were in the backseat learning and doing Google Classroom also on video speaking. So unfortunately, it was very difficult for me to do, but thank goodness for Mr. Kristoff, who allowed me to come to campus so that I can complete my job and continue doing what I need to do. There are some serious situations out here in our district that I don't believe you are aware of. What happened at Eagle Ranch at the end of school, the last day of May, the Friday of May, the 1st of June, is one to say, and I've now been informed of two others. It needs to be considered.
Okay, Ms. Wiley, thank you, but your time is like up.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker is Monica Cooper.
I'm unmuted.
Monica, we're ready when you are, Monica.
Hello. Welcome, Dr. Mitchell, to the Adelanto Elementary School District, and hello to the school board and other cabinet members. My name is Monica Cooper, and I'm a first grade, excuse me, first grade teacher at Gus Franklin School. 11 years ago, my husband William, of 38 years, was blessed with a second chance. Through the generous selfish gifts of a donor family, he is able to begin the second half of his life surrounded by family, friends, and the faith that binds us to our humanity. We are forever thankful to the support of our Adelanto School District family. Colleagues donated hours so I could stay home and assist him in his recovery. Recovery is long and slow, and he still deals with underlying health issues related to his illness. Medication, his life tapestry takes daily to avoid rejection, suppress his immune system. Our family has always taken precautions, been careful to avoid any exposure to illnesses we may bring home. Unfortunately, my husband is outnumbered because two of our older sons and myself are employed within a school district. My husband, like many other stakeholders themselves, or their family members in the school district, pay up underlying health risks, which may prevent them from returning to school. Example for the hydra in-school district learning model, the 25% of the school enrollment supplemented with district learning instruction is something that I am concerned about. It is not a safe way to reopen our schools. Currently, district learning is the safest way to reopen our schools. Thank you. I want to thank the prior educators who so elegantly addressed concerned issues with regards to opening our school safely. I would also like to share some of today's San Bernardino County COVID-19 information. The county right now is failed to meet state benchmarks as put by the San Bernardino County on the governor's watch list, which result in increased oversight and additional closures to combat the virus. Over the past two weeks, the county has recorded 7,750 new cases failing the standards for disease transmission. The number of hospitalizations has been increasing. There are now 680 patients with a confirmed or suspected case. The county's hospital classes within state standards, less than 80% of the ICU beds are occupied with at least 75% of ventilators are available. Our neighboring school district, Hesperia Superintendent Dave Olney, yesterday has decided to open the schools with distant learning. He has found out through research in the past three weeks, the number of cases in his school community have doubled. And speaking with the local hospitals, they were beginning to implement surge plans that did not think they would need to implement. While school-aged children are not as susceptible to COVID, as of June 23rd, he had 21 childhood cases in Hesperia. He's already had few employees tested positively, as well as other students. I am very concerned about school reopening and the model of even part-time. Just for the sake of stakeholders, family members, I think it's the best interest of our district to look closely at the projections of COVID cases now and realize this is only a temporary. You know, eventually, our schools will be back open, and we will be able to embrace our children in our classrooms and to have a wonderful school year. But in education, there's a saying too, sometimes you go slow to go fast, and I think this is the time for us to go slow to go fast. And I always have a saying, well, that I share with my sons very often is, this too shall pass, and I do believe this too shall pass. So I hope the board makes good decisions, and thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
We do have one last minute, one that just came in. Trustee Heinz, is it okay to have Angela Coach talk? Or trustee Benz, if that's okay?
Sure.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, yeah. The connection still sounds weird. Okay, and you said we had one more speaker?
Yes.
Yes, you, ma'am.
Yourself? We are ready.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Angela Coach. I'm a third-grade teacher at George. I would like to address Agenda Item 5.03, PBIS. The county of San Bernardino has had years of opportunity to promote and support the PBIS program. Unfortunately, little has been provided, or perhaps there is little to provide. The collection of student data is questionable. Our schools don't maintain an adequate database to support a claim that PBIS has created positive climate change within our schools. In fact, the effects seem to be less than desirable. Good argument can be made that it rewards less than desirable behavior while ignoring serious, less than desirable, excuse me, while ignoring serious and often dangerous student behaviors. Perhaps it's time to look into new practices that may be more suitable to the needs of our clients. Where data is real and measurable, and the effects of a positive climate change can be felt rather than claimed. I'm a little upset right now, a little shaken up. If you can hear it in my voice, I do apologize. As I have been sitting here listening to people speak on COVID, I received a text from my son that his wife's uncle is dying from COVID. He was diagnosed three days ago. He has moved now into acute pneumonia and has been placed on a ventilator. This is a real situation for us. I think many of us are going to be feeling the effects much closer than home than we had anticipated. The gentleman does live in Las Vegas. He was exposed in Las Vegas because of the reopening of Las Vegas. He is 60 years old, and we don't expect him to be with us much longer. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your service to the community, and thank you for doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So sorry for that.
Okay, that is all of our audience members. We do have one comment from ADTA. That is Laura Pennington. Laura, you are unmuted. If you could unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam President. Heinz, good evening, Superintendent Mitchell, Cabinet, stakeholders participating in this meeting. I wanted to share with you, well, it's from a colleague in Iowa. She's a teacher, and it's something that she kind of wrote that's kind of been circulating out here, and I think it kind of captured a lot of what we're feeling. And sometimes things become politicized, and sometimes we just get tired of it all. So I want to go ahead and read this. This is from a teacher in Iowa. Her name is Allison Homan. And it's kind of like a discussion between society and schools, so please bear with me. Society: In the richest country in the world, between 11 and 13 million children live in food insecure homes. So here's the school's response. We can help. Kids can eat breakfast and lunch at school, and in many places, teachers will spend their own money on snacks. For the most needy, we will send home food for dinner and weekends. Society: Over 4 million children in the U.S. do not have health insurance or adequate healthcare. School's response: We can help. We will bring doctors to do free physicals, eye exams, dental treatments right at school. In many places, school nurses will spend their own money on sanitary supplies for girls. Society: Over 17% of U.S. children live without basic necessities. School's response: We can help. We will install washers and dryers in schools. We will hand out clothes, school supplies, shoes, and winter coats for free. Many of these items are purchased by school nurses and teachers. Society: There are 5.5 million reports annually of physical abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect. The school's response: We can help. Schools will be safe places, and teachers will be safe people. We will have some counselors, but not enough, some therapists, but not enough, right in the schools. Teachers with minimal training and trauma will come to school early and stay late to mentor these children. Teachers will spend more time with their students than with their own children. Teachers will cry and sometimes crumble at the thought of not being able to do more for the innocent children in their care. Society: Almost 25% of U.S. children have parents that work past school hours. Schools: We can help. We will install before and after-school programs in thousands of schools where kids can get another meal, get help with their homework, and participate in organized activities. Society: Almost 14 million children in the U.S. are obese. Schools: We can help. Physical education classes will be mandatory, and we will incorporate lessons about healthy food choices. Society: The U.S. averages one school shooting every 77 days. School: We can help. We will lock down drills, we will do lockdown drills, train our students to hide and be quiet, and if need be... and if need be, teachers will literally die for their student. Society, we are in the midst of a global pandemic which our government has failed to control. Almost 130,000 more now Americans are dead and the numbers are rising, not declining in many places. As we have chosen to ignore for decades the racism, inequality, and discrimination that is at the root of all the aforementioned problems, we now need schools to reopen so the kids can eat, get healthcare, get clothes, shoes, school supplies, be safe, be healthy, and be supervised. Oh, and so that they can get an education. It appears that COVID doesn't affect children, so let's get back to school. Teachers, we can help. But what about the 25% to 30% of us that are over the age of 50? What about those of us who are immunocompromised or live with someone who is? What about those of us who are pregnant? We still have very limited data on what COVID does to unborn children. Will you have PPE for us? Will you have hand sanitizer for us? And what if we get sick and don't have enough sick days to cover the time that we are out? What if a family member gets sick and we need to care for them? Society, wow. Why are you suddenly being a bunch of crybabies? Before, you were always willing to sacrifice your time, your money, your mental health. And now, when we need you, you aren't willing to sacrifice your health or your life. But 75% of you are women. And that's what we see as a society. Expect women to do, sacrifice yourself for others. For decades, schools and teachers have been the Band-Aid on society's failings because we care about children. Schools and teachers are not the ones that can fix the things that are broken with our society. At the same time, we cannot be the lamb sent to slaughter because no one else cared enough to actually fix society while schools and teachers were holding it all together with said Band-Aid. So with that, we know already that Apple Valley, Hesperia, and now Silver Valley have gone to distance learning. It is ADTA's position, the Adelanto District Teachers Association's position, that we start our year with distance learning. For the safety of our students, the safety of our staff, and the safety of our community, I am proposing a phase-in model. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all we have for public comment.
Trustee Hines?
Thank you. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll be moving forward with Item 4 in the agenda, adoption of the minute. 4.01. Approved the board minutes as written in order field. That's a board meeting of June 18th, 2020, and regular board minutes of June 23rd, 2020. You have a motion? Echus, I motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Trustee Turner, go ahead. Give it to Trustee Benz.
Okay, then, then second?
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrenche?
Yes.
Trustee Echus?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Aye.
Trustee Hines?
Trustee Hines, aye. Motion carries, 5-0. Moving forward to our consent agenda, item 5. And... Okay. Is there any items that are being requested to be removed from the consent agenda?
Yes. 5.05. 5.04 and 5.03.
Okay, so I have that from Trustee Benz. Okay. Okay, so...
I have one, but I can't find it, the hotspot. I would like 5 point, this is Trustee Turner, 5.23.
5.23, Trustee Turner. Okay, that's it?
Yes.
Okay, so... Other than those, I would like to get a motion then to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrenche?
Trustee LaFrenche, aye.
Trustee Echus?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Aye.
Trustee Hines?
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0. And, okay, I'll turn it over to you, Trustee Benz, for the items that were pulled for discussion.
Okay, so I did pull 5.03, 5.04, 5.05, and 5.07. First thing, because I wanted to ask if we are going to do distance learning, how could these programs be applied? Or are we waiting until, you know, the school, you know, this COVID thing has passed and then we'll implement them later on in the year? 5.07, I did notice not all of the schools are there. And I just wanted to know why.
Thank you, Trustee Benz. Dr. Williams, would you mind answering those questions, please?
Good. Dr. Mitchell, 5.03. Trustee Benz, yes, MTSS and MTSS is going to be a vital part of our virtual learning as we're working to ensure the needs of our students are met. First, with good first teaching at that tier-one level and then identifying those students in tier-two and tier-three who are needing that extra support. In addition to PBIS also being a tool as we address the academic and behavioral and social needs of our students through the virtual learning setting. So these trainings will be provided through a virtual setting for our teachers to make sure that we are addressing the whole child academically, socially, emotionally, and behavioral issues.
Okay.
And 5.04 and 5, Dr. Williams?
Yes, 5.04. Our district is definitely focusing on early literacy for our students in TK to 2. Definitely, as we look at our data around the dashboard, we are feeling very confident in strengthening the needs of our teachers by providing training for them in the area of early literacy. And 5.05, we have a professional development training coming up in August and we will be providing teachers with training around UDL. And we did put out a survey where over 240 of our teachers responded asking for support in these particular areas. So that did support our decision-making around the different trainings we would be offering.
Dr. Williams, for the benefit of our viewing audience, could you define UDL, please?
Universal Design for Learning. That is an opportunity to ensure that our teachers are using strategies to meet the diverse needs of our students. It's called out in the order around our learning continuity and attendance plan where we have to be very specific and look at the considerations of our English learners and our special ed students. And we feel that this training will give our teachers the tools, strategies, and resources to be able to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And then lastly, the schools that are listed for 5.07 and why there may be some omissions?
Yes, for this particular board item, we did ask principals who would be purchasing iXL for the upcoming year. At our last board meeting, we did bring, I believe it was two or three school sites who were going to be purchasing next-gen math. So you might not see a school site here on this particular list because they decided to purchase next-gen math, which is currently tabled to be brought back to the board meeting in August.
So, so we will revisit that conversation around the next-gen math and that may resolve the issue here with some of the omitted schools, Trustee Benz.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I do have a question. On 5.03, the MTSS and the PBIS, looking at that, it just came to my mind. How would we implement that? Would that be a pull-out? How would the kids participate in PBIS?
So during distance learning, we still are asking teachers to interact with their kids during synchronous instruction, which is real-time instruction. And so relationship building is just as important online as it is in person. So we still want to continue to build our skills. And ultimately, at some point, our kids will return to school. We want to use this time, we see this time as an opportunity to really build the skill and knowledge and competency of our staff. We think that we can get much more training done while we're in this crisis. So our teachers are well-prepared when kids do return, as well as utilize the skills live in a distance learning model.
Okay, so, Dr. Mitchell, you feel that the amount of this course is worth the money?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Hines, are you in?
Thank you, yes. So if we have no other questions or further discussion, do we have a motion to approve?
Madam President?
I think Ms. Turner picked 5.23.
I did. And also, on 5.23, approved one-year T-Mobile hotspot. Dr. Mitchell, my question is for you. Do you feel that with that purchase of a hotspot, that would cover our entire district for all of our students?
I think what we're going to see here is a moving target, Trustee. We, my information now, and me and Ms. Grudill can fill me in a little bit, is that this will satisfy some of the gaps that we have, but we have an ongoing assessment of the students that still need a device as well as hotspots. You heard from a parent earlier where she has multiple kids in one house. And so we still got a lot of work to do here. Ms. Grudill, could you fill us in a little bit on 5.23 in terms of the coverage that this purchase would cover?
I think that's Dr. Williams, but just, yeah, it's Dr. Williams' item. But, Dr. Williams, you want to talk more about that?
Sure. Trustee Turner, we did bring to board previously 200 hotspots to be approved. During our last distance learning, we did send a survey out to all of our students and families to determine the need. And we feel that the 500 will definitely be sufficient at this time, but we are continuing to monitor additional requests and needs for hotspots.
Okay, what about some of the rural areas like El Mirage and some parts of Adelanto? And how would we get the learning over to those students? Are those areas that you're considering?
Absolutely. We're definitely looking at the priority of areas within the district that has connectivity issues. I've also been working with my IT department to look at how we can make sure that we're extending Wi-Fi from our school sites to the parking lots as another option for our families. So we are, this is at the forefront of our minds as we're making sure that everyone has what they need to be able to access distance learning.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question. This is Ms. Echus. Has anybody heard if CSBA has looked into legislation or any kind of policy they can make with these internet corporations or phone companies? Or anything, since we're all in this situation of, you know, having them provide schools, you know, with this type of service? Instead of us having to pay this huge amount of money for each school district for all these children? I was just wondering if anybody's brought this up or if it's a concern or there's a conversation going on where maybe we can look into this to have somehow the state mandate or regulate or help us get this type of service for all our schools since we're all in this situation? I think it's unfortunate that the schools have to pay so much money to do something that the state should be and is involved in. And this is such a new thing for all of us that I think they should be involved and help us get this type of coverage, even if it's for a short time, to help with the learning of our kids in our state. I don't know. Does anybody know anything or heard anything that the states would look into this? Or CSBA is trying to get involved in it?
Thank you, Trustee Echus. We echo your sentiments. I know that back in March, April, when we first had to shut down, that there was some legislation moving through to provide those hotspots. And I do know that there was a couple hundred thousand state provided for rural areas. And so I'm not sure if Adelanto took advantage of that or not. I'm happy to check and see where the legislation is at right now. And so let me look into that and get back to you on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Can I tune in on that? I was just reading in Ed Cow that Chula Vista Unified School District, they're spending $650,000. That's what the hotspot cost. But the city, yeah, the Chula Vista City Council voted to pick up that fund. I just read that right before I got on. So it is expensive. It's very expensive. And if there's something, I agree with Trustee Echus, that can get us some of that funding. And, Dr. Mitchell, you mentioned back in March, is it too late to apply for that?
I'm not even sure, but I'm certainly, we'll look into it at first thing in the morning. Thank you.
And wait, I'm showing a note from one of our comments that, I wish you, it flashed and then it left saying that there are some providers that are providing free internet. But it left before I can read all of it.
And we looked into that while I was in San Bernardino. We found that the majority of those providers, that they would provide three months if families provided a credit card. So as you know, that kind of a hook. They were providing three months, some were doing four months for free, but there was a charge. And our families in San Bernardino at least were concerned about being able to take on that charge once it wasn't free anymore. So I will look into where the current offerings are. We may see a revisit of that because we are, you know, most districts are looking at a district distance learning model. So let me look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll need a motion for Item 5.23 for approval. Echus, I will motion. Do we have a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Aren't we going to include 5.03?
Yes.
5.04?
I'll be, we'll be voting on each item individually.
Okay.
Thank you. And so if there's no further discussion in 5.23, we'll call for the vote.
Madam President, correction, that's 5.03. I'll take the vote. Trustee LaFrenche?
Trustee LaFrenche, yes.
Trustee Echus?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Aye, Trustee Hines. Motion carries, 5-0. Okay, and then Item 5.07?
Madam President, 5.04.
Okay. Do we have 504, 503, 505, and 507? Is that correct?
And 5.23, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so do we...
Okay, so do we have a motion for?
I, I mo- motion to, to approve.
I second, Echus. Okay. Any further discussion? Not, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
Trustee LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Trustee Hines, aye. Motion carries five zero. And the next item, that, five point zero three.
Five point zero five, Madam President.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Five point zero five. Do we have a motion?
We approve five point zero five. Trustee Turner.
Have a motion by Benz and a second by trustee Turner.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. If no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, yes.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Hines, aye. Motion carries five zero. And I believe we're on five point zero seven.
Correct.
And do we have a motion?
Uh, Benz, I move to mo- motion.
I'll second. You have a second by trustee Echus. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
Yes.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Trustee Hines, aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we can scroll up. Thank you. And our next item on the agenda.
No, we have five point two five, President Hines. Two, two, three, I'm sorry.
I thought we voted on.
A motion that we approve five point two three, approve one year T-Mobile hotspot contract.
I'll second, Echus. Okay. We'll call, we'll call for the vote.
I have a first with Turner and a second with trustee Echus. I'll take the vote. Trustee LaFrench.
Aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Thank you. Okay, and our next item on the agenda, if you could scroll up, Chris. Thank you. So we have, okay, so we are at. Yeah, I can't see.
A motion that we table this until we return from closed session. Five point, seven point oh one.
Okay. Here we are. Um, new business, seven point oh one.
Yes, trustee Turner.
And we had a motion from trustee Turner to table.
Until we return.
Until we return from closed session. Do we have a second?
Benz, sec- second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, we will be discussing this item in, in closed session. Am I not correct? Dr. Bo- Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. And then we'll come back out and then we'll move it. And then we can vote on it when we return back from closed session.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll vote to table this. Go ahead, Z. We'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Hines, aye. Motion carries five zero. I have him tabled. Item seven point zero two. Resolution, I'll turn over to Dr. Marguerite.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
We're on seven point zero two?
Yes, so thank you, President Hines. Board, we're bringing this resolution to you tonight in an effort to ensure that our teachers have the training that they need to be successful in working in a distance learning environment. We are requesting an exemption from separation from service for consultant Barbara Richardson. She will be consulting with our instructional technology department to make sure that our teachers are trained in Google Classroom, in Zoom, as well as other digital platforms that will lead to high quality instruction and increase student engagement while we're in this distance learning environment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a mo-? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion that we approve, resolution twenty point, twenty one point zero one.
I second, Echus. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Uh, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Trustee Hines, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item eight, unfinished business, eight point oh one. Approve first reading for board policy, four one one two point eight, four two one two point eight, four three one two point eight. Employment of relatives. I wanted to pull this item for the superintendent to expand on what we would like to do with this. Okay, so you're motioning? To pull or table for, or for him to have a discussion of sorts or explain what, how we're going to proceed with this before we vote on it? Okay.
Trustee Echus proposed that we table this item and that we put, hold a special board workshop to talk about governance and policy approval. And so for the board's consideration, I, I, I support tabling it. And then coming back to it in a workshop where we can go over board governance, policy development approval, as well as just board relationship protocols.
Are you, this is trustee Turner. Are you recommending that we table all of these policies so we could do a workshop? And will the workshop be soon?
Yes, soon, soon as the board is able.
Okay. I, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is it, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
Nay.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Turner. I think we lost trustee Turner. Chris, do you see her?
I'm looking right now.
Trustee Benz.
Uh, Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Do not have Turner in the meeting as of right now.
Okay, at this time, the motion carries three. We'll, we'll give her a minute.
You're welcome. Trustee Turner, aye, and she's logging in.
Okay. Okay, so motion carries four, four one. Moving to eight point zero two, certificated administrative new hire.
Oh, yes. I mo- mo- motion that, that we approve this.
Okay. We have a motion from?
Benz.
Trustee Benz. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Echus. Okay. Is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrench.
Aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Is trustee Turner?
Item. Oh.
Nope, she's not back in.
Okay, four zero. Okay. We're moving to item nine, policy introductions, updates, and readings. We have nine point oh one then scheduled. Item ten, our superintendent's report. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you so much. Let me give you one second here.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you, Madam President. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to the board for the confidence placed in me by appointing me as superintendent. Been the, been the dream of my life. And so I'm honored and humbled and look forward to our collective work on behalf of the Adelanto community. I also want to thank the dozens of staff members and school leaders that have sent wonderful messages of welcoming, well wishes to me. I have truly felt welcomed into the Adelanto family, so thank you all for that. I'd like to take a few minutes to update the board on some of the activities that we have been engaged in in my whole 14 days on the job. And so as you, as you can imagine, school reopening has been the biggest and basically the only topic that we've been engaged in. And so we've developed some core values that I want to make sure community hears us say. Some core values that will govern any recommendations that we give to the board or any strategies that we, that we develop to, to provide continuation of our instructional program. So those core values will assure the reopening of our schools safely, as well as provide a high quality instructional program. We will adhere to COVID-19 safety guidelines to protect the health, safety, and wellness of students and staff. We will identify and develop supports to meet the social and emotional needs of students and staff. We will provide school leaders, teachers, and support staff with training, resources, and support to successfully implement a high quality instructional program. We, we will provide differentiated instructional supports to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. And we will provide timely, transparent, and informative communication to staff, parents, and community members related to COVID-19 and school reopening. With that said, we are developing two models to implement, which will strict, which will, in that implementation will strictly be dependent on advisement from the various state and local agencies related to COVID-19. As we've all talked about, of course, exploring and developing a hundred percent online distance learning model where we would be fully online. And, 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 and so we want to develop that model so that we're ready to pull the trigger on that. And then we also are developing a hybrid in-school distance learning model, which would include daily instruction to 20 to 25% of our school enrollment supplemented by distance instruction. So as I said, we would do one or the other. And we will bring a, we will bring a recommendation to the board at a special board meeting this Thursday, so that the board can make a final decision as to how we should reopen. And, and, and obviously, as I said, we will base that recommendation largely on what we're seeing in, 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 in the community as it relates to COVID-19. And so to support those decisions and to gather and solicit input and feedback from our, from our stakeholders. We've created a reopen schools advisory committee, and we've asked all staff to participate. The purpose of this committee is to discuss how we might provide a high quality instructional program for students while strictly adhering to COVID safe, COVID-19 safety guidelines to protect the health, safety, and well-being of staff and students. And so in that, we've created three subcommittees. One around instruction, and this subcommittee will develop guidance for curriculum, instruction, assessment, as well as teacher and parent training and student supports for either distance learning or hybrid model. Number two, subcommittee number two is logistics. This subcommittee will develop guidance to implement COVID-19 guidelines as it relates to personal protective equipment or P E P P Es, social distancing, both on the transportation and in the classroom, as well as sanitizing, as well as logistics for, around transportation and nutrition. And then number three, which is hugely important, is communications. And this subcommittee will develop processes to provide timely, transparent, informative communication to staff, parents, and community members regarding our reopening or other news related to COVID-19. We will also host input sessions for parents and students. And so if you would like to participate in any of these subcommittees, or the parent input session, or student input session, we, we, I did send out participation information in a letter to staff and parents, but we will also include this info on our website, and it is in Spanish and English. As I said earlier, we will be having a special board meeting this Thursday, July 16th, 5:30 p.m., where the staff, myself and the staff will present some, some of the data related to COVID-19 and our recommendation for how we should start school. As someone stated earlier, of course, we are leaning heavily toward distance learning as we see that the COVID-19 rates in the area and across the region are really surging high. But, but ultimately, that decision lies with the board. And so we will provide the information that you need to make an informed decision that meets the needs of our students and staff. And so the other, and so beyond the COVID-19, I'm spending a lot of my time getting to know our, our leaders and staff. And so I've just had a whirlwind of meeting people and getting names. And so I'm, I'm working on my name memorization and rolls and just getting to know the city and getting to know its wonderful leaders and teachers and staff and crew. It's just been a wonderful time. And so I've had a chance to have a management meeting with all of the managers in the district. We will host another one, I think, next week, where we will continue to give information to our leaders after the board's decision on how best to manage and implements the board's decision around how we reopen for our schools. I've also had a chance to meet with all of our union leaders from CSEA as well as ADTA. And so we have, we'll plan on meeting cabinet and union leaders every month in informal sessions so that we can build a relationship and, and figure out how we might partner to meet the needs of our staff and students in the district. And then I also have a bunch of, a series of meetings with our local city leaders, city council, various important VIPs in the area, so that I might begin building robust relationships with our city, with our junior colleges, as well as with our surrounding district and neighbors. And so I'm, I'm, I'm having a great time so far. I'm looking so forward to the work. I just think this is the gem of a district, and I just can't wait to really dig in. And, and guys, I, I can't tell you how hard it is to begin this experience here in, in Adelanto with this COVID. I just am just being so distraught that we're all going through this. And I just feel so bad for our, our kids. We know that our kids in front of a teacher is the best place for them to be. But I think we will get through this as well as, as other challenges. And hopefully, we can get back to the business of running. But in the meantime, I believe that, that partying together, we can develop high quality instructional model for our children, even if it's distance learning. And we want to continue in those committees. Those committees will be ongoing because we continue, we want to continue the conversation. Those committees will be ongoing because we continue, we want to continue the conversation on how to get better and how to, uh, provide a higher level of, of, uh, quality of instruction, quality of engagement. We want to create an environment for our teachers to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, test things out, to try different things. Uh, we want to provide a supportive environment for our teachers to learn new skills and strategies as it relates to online. Even we're struggling with kind of online meetings and, and it's kind of, it's kind of clumsy and it's kind of, and, but we're getting through it and we'll, we will get better as well as our, our staff and students. And so, so looking forward to the experience here and so, thanks again for it. That's all my comments.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, so we will be moving forward with, um, the government board members reporting the announcement. Trustee Benz?
Let me start with me. Um, just re- real quick, I just want to say that like all, always, I hear your concerns. I've been read, reading the email mails. I have been seeing your, your, your chats and I've heard your con- concerns. And, you know, I, I know, you know, because I'm in the same boat, you know, what's gonna hap- happen and stuff. But know that your safety is the first priority for me and I know for the rest of the board. And as much as I want the kids to come back and, you know, we're gonna make the right de- de- decis- decision for the kids that they're, they're safe first. You know, so, we've got a great team now and I think this, this dis- district is gonna come, come out shine, shining. So, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Turner?
Hey, I would just like to, um, uh, say kudos to what trustee Benz just mentioned. Um, we've had some time to think about distant learning. Back in March, when we abruptly closed the district, we had never done this before, not for this long a period of time. And I, I just want to first tell all the teachers out there, thank you. You know, it wasn't perfect, but you did what you had to do, you know, and, and now, we have an opportunity to try to make it better. And I know we're gonna make it better. You know, I've read all of your emails. I try to respond back to every last one of you. If I didn't get to everyone, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get your, I didn't, it didn't come across yet. I know it will if I didn't get it. But the, the safety of our students and our staff is our top priority. And this, this virus is unpredictable, just like, uh, one of our, uh, teachers mentioned that, uh, it, uh, I think it was, uh, Crystal Wiley, that mentioned in, in the carpool, everyone's symptoms were different, but they were all riding in the same car, so we don't know. And it's not worth it to me in order to risk the safety and health of anyone when we could do a distant learning. Dr. Mitchell mentioned, there's nothing better than having kids in front of you in your classroom. But I'm so grateful for technology that we could do it distant and how we're meeting right now. We're doing distant meeting so we could, it can be done. And we're all in this together. We may have all different, um, type of situations and the emails, they were varied. You know, some wanting the kids to come back, some want the district learning, the distant learning. So, you know, our decision on Thursday will be, will come from my heart. It was best for our community and our students because I too have children, grandchildren in this district and I fear every day for them. So, I just want to say thank you, um, for everything that you've done. And I also want to say thank you to all the community members and everyone that's, that's, that logged into this meeting. You know, we have never had a hundred people in our board meetings before, so I'm really happy that you're here and that you're listening and you're watching. And I also want to see, you know, hopefully, that you'll be able to participate in our committees, um, that, that is, that Dr. Uh, Mitchell has started. And we need to hear from all of you because your children are here. You, you know, our teachers are our community as well, so we want to hear from you. And the decisions will be based on, you know, all of your viewpoints and what's good for our district. So, with that being said, thank you again and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee LaFrench?
I just want to let everyone know that, you know, as a trustee and a parent, um, here in Adelanto, that my first priority is the safety of our, our children, of our teachers, of our, our staff. Um, I hear, I read the emails. I would just want to let everyone know that, you know, we will make the best decision for our children and our staff. And we all know that right now, while we're going through this pandemic, that it's, it's new for everyone. You know, we all have to, um, continue to practice, um, safe distance, continue to wear our masks. We have to continue to do the things that's safe for our families. But going forward, I just want, you know, to let you guys know that going forward, that we all have to come up with a decision that's best to support everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Echus?
Hi, yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and, and just, uh, just say the same thing everybody else is saying tonight and add to it that we have, I personally have nothing but positive attitude about all of this, um, and for our district. Uh, we're a big family and we care about everyone and their safety. Uh, we're here for each other and we'll get through it. Um, our new superintendent is working hard to get us there and I have faith in him and our teachers and staff. Uh, I want the parents to know that we are here for their children's safety and, and we have them full mind of, of their safety and their learning. And, uh, we're very mindful of them. I know I am. I know there's lots of parents out there that need to get back to work and they're dependent on us to have their children during the day. And this is really hurting a lot of people that work and, uh, need to have their children in school. Um, I know they're struggling. There's a lot of them struggling. I also know that there's a lot of parents worried about their children falling behind. Um, I, I would be one of those parents, definitely. Uh, you know, learning is everything and every day is so important to have a child learn. And every opportunity that's missed, i- it just, it's some kids, it does set them behind. So, these are all things that are in our minds, in our thoughts, and we're all trying to get through this. This is something we've never done before. And I think once we get the, we get it in place, uh, we're hoping it'll go away and we'll get back to normal. But until then, I think if we all are very mindful and we work together, we can get these kids that education that they need. And we can do what we can to help those parents that are dependent on us and those who aren't able to, uh, do distance learning. Uh, I'm sure some people struggle with that. So, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, aspects to this whole thing, but I think if we all work together and we put our minds together, I think we can have, uh, probably different options. But for now, yeah, the distance learning does seem to be more appropriate because of what's going on and it's such a fluid situation every day. But I know we're just gonna get through it day by day and I think these community and, uh, committees are just gonna really help with everybody's input and ideas. So, um, on that note, um, just thank you and I know we're just gonna, we're gonna get through this together. Just, we just need to stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, I myself concur with, you know, so much of what's been spoken already by my fellow trustees. And I'm truly excited for the opportunity to be able to, um, you know, and I understand the responsibility and I do not take it lightly, to be able to, uh, make qualified, informed, valuable decisions for our children, for our staff and, um, ultimately for our community as well. So, I am thankful for all of the hard work that's gone in over the last few weeks. Um, everything that our superintendent, our teachers, our staff, um, you know, our custodians, everyone working so hard to prepare, knowing that the bottom line is that we are coming back. School is opening. How, what that looks like, what exactly it's going to manifest or transform into, we're not certain. But I'm always excited about our city and our citizens and the fact that our district, I continue to say it, is so resilient that we do not stop, we do not, um, back down. We just keep pressing forward. Some of you may still be hesitant about bringing ideas or sharing information and, and I say, bring it. We welcome it. We thank you for asking the tough questions, for bringing information that we may not know about, for bringing ideas that will be able to help us in this next part of the journey, you know, in the upcoming school year. So, I am keeping a very positive attitude. I am thankful that we have not, uh, been, you know, just hit with so much, uh, tragedy that some communities have faced. So, I'm grateful for that, but I'm also grateful that we have the opportunity to continue to maintain our, um, momentum, if you will, in that area and keep our children safe. That's the bottom line. That is the bottom line, is to make sure that they are safe and that they do have the opportunity to grow up, you know, to be able to learn, but more than anything, to be safe. And so, because we're so uncertain and we, we don't understand this thing and it changes every day, um, just the fact that we're remaining positive, that we're remaining hopeful, that we're, you know, continuing to move forward is so very encouraging to me. And I just want to say thank you to everyone and I'm just so extremely grateful for the opportunity. That's it.
All right. And so, now, moving forward, we will, um, be going into item twelve, our closed session declaration. And, um, we have twelve point zero two, conference with legal counsel, twelve point zero three, government code section five four nine five seven, public employee discipline dismissal, release, appointment, reassignment, resignation. Um, item twelve point oh four, government code section five four nine five seven point six, update with conference with labor negotiator. And, um, prior to that, we will move into thirteen, public testimony before closed session. Do we have anyone, Chris?
Yes, we have, uh, two speakers for closed session. Um, the first one is Nanette Kadilly. Give me one second.
Hi, welcome, Nanette.
Nanette, if you can unmute your mic, you're, we're ready when you are.
Okay. Let me find my spot. Okay. So, it's gonna sound a little harsh, but that's me, so here I go. I'm Nanette Kadilly. Um, good evening, everyone. Again, items listed in the agenda tonight really concern me. I'm concerned that our district is slipping back to a time when we had a superintendent that spent frivolously. We ref- we refer to her as the bee lady. She hired a P R person and walked around our schools as if she was a superstar. She took photo ops whenever she could. She packed the district office with unnecessary positions. Secretaries had secretaries and new positions were made up and created. Unnecessary colored printing and T-shirts, sweatshirts, free events, free food happened regularly. We've been told that we did not have money to give our teachers cola and better health and welfare benefits, that we were in declining enrollment and deficit spending. To spend unnecessary money as a new superintendent are huge red flags to me. I know that you have come from big districts, but we are small, a small-town district and any money should be spent on our teachers, our staff and everything necessary to educate our students. I'm also concerned about any of our board members and our new superintendent bringing in their buddies to fill positions or if they're part of a company that you're hiring. This happens a lot in our district. We will not stand for that. Our teachers and our union leadership are extremely smart and can see the signs of this unjust practice coming a mile away. We want a change in our district. No more corruption. I hope you're listening. I hope you can hear me and I hope that we do have change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker, um, for closed session is Crystal Wiley. Crystal, if you could unmute your mic, you were ready when you are. Looking through her video, it doesn't look like she appeared as, that she's at her computer. I don't know if you'd like to can, uh, to wait or if you want to move on.
Um, well, we'll go ahead and move on. And, okay, so that was it?
Yes, only.
So, is, do we have any, uh, and no one from A D T A and C S E A?
Uh, you do not have anything for closed session for A D T A?
For closed session. Okay, thank you. So, item fourteen, recess to closed session. Do we have a motion?
All motion, Echus.
Okay, is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Okay, I heard trustee Ben.
Whichever, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
LaFrench?
Aye.
Echus?
Aye.
Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
He Benz?
Aye.
He Hines?
Aye. Motion carries five zero, we're recessed to closed session.
Time is six fifty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. We are back. We reconvene the open session. Uh, can we have the roll call?
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, present.
Trustee Echus?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, present.
He Hines?
Trustee Hines, present. Thank you.
Madam President, the time is.
The time is. Thank you, eight thirty-four P M. I'm sorry, I, I don't have a screen and I don't have the agenda in front of me, my screen is down.
We're on sixteen point oh one, announcement of reportable actions taken during closed session.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read the case number for the O A H case?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the board took, took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for O A H case number two zero two zero 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 five zero three two one. It was moved by trustee Benz and seconded by trustee Turner. The vote was five, five, five vote unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are bringing back item, can I get the item number on that?
Sure.
Seven oh one?
Seven point oh one.
Seven point oh one, thank you.
I move that we, um, accept the superintendent's recommendation to, uh, hire a, uh, public information officer with one change to the job description, that that person oversee our district website and update it, uh, appropriately.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sec- second?
I have a second by trustee Benz. Is there some discussion?
Actually, yeah, I do want to say some, something. Um, we chose this because we think that this will bring good things to the di- district. Um, we need somebody who can come, commu- communicate about, about the dis- district to the pub, public. to the public beyond what just someone just twitters here and there. And I think, again, I'm looking in the long term. So that's why I am seconding it.
I have a question. I have a comment, too. You know, I approve this. I recommend the hire of this public information officer only because, you know, we have some great things happening in our district. George, our visual arts school, also our dual-emergent school. A lot of people don't know that. They don't know that we offer that. And I believe that with this person marketing us and marketing our district and marketing, you know, what we have to offer, it'll bring some of our students back. We have a lot of students going out to Riverside Prep and to other districts. And I believe that if we have someone talking about what AESD have to offer, we'll get those students back. And I believe that this position will in turn pay for itself in the long run. And so I believe, and I believe that this is a great investment for the district to make. Not only that, with COVID and get information out to our parents, get information out to our community, I think that this would be great. I've been wanting to see this happen for a long time. Other districts have a public information officer, a lot smaller than AESD. And so, and it's doing well, and their district is doing very well. So with that being, that's all I have on that. I support this position.
Okay, I wanted to make a comment. I'm just not too certain about the timing. I am concerned, as a trustee who's basically responsible for the funds in our district, we are in charge of that. That is our responsibility. I believe, or I think, the pay is a little much for this position. I wanted to add a grant writer in as a requirement or part of their position to really get our money's worth from this person in this position. I don't know, with the uncertainty of the economy and the way things are going right now, we may be financially okay to get through this year, but we just don't know next year or the next. We just don't know. And I kind of err on the side of caution when it comes to money, and because we don't have a CBO in our position right now, these are just things that just kind of leave me on the fence. I'm sure it'll be a good position. I'm sure they'll do a good job. But I just don't know. I'm not feeling comfortable with it at this time. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Echus?
Nay.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Aye.
Trustee Heinz?
Aye. Motion carries 4-1. Moving on, can you give me the next item?
Item 1701, a German.
Okay.
Yay, my motion. Ms. Echus' motion.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Trustee Turner?
Go ahead, Trustee.
Oh, sorry.
If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
I have a first by Trustee Echus, a second by Trustee Benz. I'll take the vote. Trustee LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Echus?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Echus Benz?
Aye.
And Trustee Heinz?
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:41 PM. Awesome.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.